I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call to order the special meeting of the common council. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll and read the prepared announcement.
October 11, 2016, please be advised, this meeting is being taped for video and audio broadcast. Assisted listening devices are available. Mr. Bonifant.
Here.
Mr. Corcello.
Here.
Mr. Hempstead.
Here.
Mr. Kimmel.
Here.
Mr. Sachinelli.
Ms. Melendez.
Here.
Mr. Sarasis.
Present.
Ms. Bowman. Mr. Sims. Mr. Caides.
Present.
Ms. Maggio.
Present.
Mr. De Palma.
Here.
Ms. O'Toole-Jin Durco.
Here.
Mr. Ignary.
Here.
Mr. Livingston.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Twelve present, we have a quorum. First item on the agenda, acceptance of the minutes from the regular meeting of September 13, 2016. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Mr. Livingston moves. Any corrections, deletions, additions? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, there's six in favor for three abstentions, I guess. Okay, thank you. Mr. Corcello abstains, Mr. De Palma abstains, passes 10 to 0 with two abstentions. Next item on the agenda, public participation, Ms. King.
Karen Lyons.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, common council. I know how hard your job is, and I hope you understand that I'm very grateful you're finally bringing up the pay scale of the registrar of voters. As you know, for many years, we were given one raise for every two years, and sometimes none. And even in 2006, the insult of $22 a year for two years was unbelievable. I have heard that we were being compared to Danbury, which is Fairfield County, but it is not the same percentage of living. And they are a part-time, four-days-a-week registrar, and they only have seven polling places, where in Norwalk we have 14, even 15. So I hope you'll consider the fact that we have double the workload of Danbury, and that you'll please compare us to our larger towns such as Bridgeport, Stamford, in Fairfield County. So I hope you will consider our standard of living also, and the good job that we have done over the years for the city of Norwalk and for our taxpayers. We have had very good elections, no problems, and I appreciate that you are coming forward and taking this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons.
Stuart Wells.
We started asking you guys for decent pay a year ago, but before the personnel committee, nothing happened. We started again this year, along with a couple matters of pay for our staff that's in our budget and was passed, but somehow didn't make it onto your agenda. Fact is, over 25 years, we've lost 30 percent to inflation. Every year I've been here, the benefits to the job have been reduced or cost more, which amounts to the same thing. And as we keep losing ground to inflation, we're paid less than our own full-time staff. It ain't right. Comparing us to Danbury isn't right, because you don't, the committee never factored in the difference in cost of living between here and there, which is a good 20 percent, based largely on the cost of housing. Of course, other city employees could move to cheaper housing, but we have to live in the city since we're elected officials. Frankly, the amount that was passed by the committee and is on your agenda is inadequate. Probably ought to be sent back to them and have them look at it again. I hope it doesn't, my comments don't endanger the raise for our staff, who badly need it as well. I've lost one staff, my full-time, or my part-time deputy already to inadequate pay. Could not survive on that, because they're working half-time, but they're not paid half a living wage, and of course, get no benefits. It's not enough, and it's not fair, and I'd better not say more.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. No one else has elected to address the common council. Is there anybody in the audience who might not have had an opportunity to sign on? Hearing none, I'll close the public participation session. Under the mayor's section, we only have one appointment that we're putting forward, the appointment of Mr. Vincent R. Howe to the Oak Hills Park Authority. Do I have a motion? Mr. De Palma.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not familiar with this gentleman personally, but based on the resume and based on the conversations I've had, you know, definitely support him.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, can I raise my hand? Opposed. Motion carries. I believe your, Mr. Howe is in the audience. Is that how you pronounce your last name?
Exactly, thank you so much.
All right, well, if you step forward, we'll issue, administer the oath of office. And I want to thank Mr. Howe for being willing to serve on the Oak Hills Authority. He brings with him his expertise in tennis, I understand, and since Oak Hills is more than just a golf course, and we want it to be so much more, I think this is a good addition. So, thank you.
Mr. Howe, will you raise your right hand? You, Vincent R. Howe, having been appointed as a member of the Oak Hills Park Authority of the City of Norwalk, do solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office according to your best skill and judgment, so help you God, or upon the pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Congratulations. There's two copies. You can keep one and I'll take the other. Your official. And that one's yours. Yes.
You're Norwalk famous now.
We'll find out for you.
79, if he has cablevision.
79.
Now you're famous.
Thank you. Just a few comments. At sundown today, our Jewish friends in Norwalk and around the world begin the celebration of Yom Kippur. It's a day of atonement, and we wish for each person of the Jewish faith that may you be sealed in the Book of Life and have an easy fast. So, thank you to all our Jewish friends for their contributions, not only to our community, but to our nation. On Thursday, October 13, we will join with developer Tom Rich in ribbon cutting for the grand opening of the Sono Pearl. At long last, we've waited a long time for that, and that's going to be an additional, or a wonderful addition to Washington Street in the Sono area, which continues to grow, and I believe in a very, very positive way. This Saturday, October 15, we will have the second annual Sono Half Marathon. Last year was a wonderful event, has a promise to be a bigger and more wonderful event this year than last. That's a nine o'clock start at Vets Park. And also, the South Norwalk Branch Library is sponsoring a lecture series called Let's Talk at Sono. On Saturday, October 29, from 1:00 p.m., the guest lecturer will be Mark Albertson, and the discussion will be around topics in a 2016 election. I think it should be a very interesting discussion.
Yes.
Mr. Kimmel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go with section, section A of the council, the council president agenda first. Mr. De Palma, could you please read the consent calendar?
Item 7A1, accept and approve the report of the Claims Committee dated August 10, 2016, and September 15, 2016.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Under, shall we, Corps of Counsel, the item 5A1.
Oh, I thought I was just doing the, okay. So, we'll start with item 5A1, appointment of Brian Candela as Assistant Corporation Back to section 7. Section 7A2, for informational purposes only, narrative on tax collection dated September 8, 2016. Item 7A3, for information purposes only, monthly tax collectors' report dated July 31, 2016, and August 31, 2016. Item 7B1A, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to enter into an agreement with Norwalk Hospital Foundation for a walk and run to be held Saturday, April 29, 2017, from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, estimated attendance 2,000. Item 7B1B, approve the use of the Showmobile by the Norwalk Hospital Foundation for the walk and run to be held Saturday, April 29, 2017. Item 7B2, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to enter into an agreement with the Silvermine PTO for the use of Silvermine School Grounds for a fall festival to be held Saturday, October 22, 2016, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., set up to take place Saturday, October 22, 2016, with teardown no later than 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 22, 2016, estimated attendance 150-plus. Item 7B3, approve the use of the Cranberry Park Pavilion 1 and immediate surrounding grounds by NAA Abrewith Girls Softball for an end-of-the-season picnic to be held Saturday, June 17, 2017, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., estimated attendance 250. Item 7B4, approve the use of the Shea McGrath Sports Complex at Norwalk High School for MBI Marching Band, Inc., for their U.S. Bands Home Show, to be held Saturday, October 15, 2016, from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., estimated attendance 1,500. Item 7B5, approve the use of the Shea McGrath Sports Complex at Norwalk High School for the MAC Championship to be held Saturday, October 22, 2016, from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., estimated attendance 1,500. And 7B6, authorize the purchasing director to issue a purchase order to Stan Tech Consulting Service, Inc., for construction administration for turf field conversion at Brian McMahon High School for an amount not to exceed $18,500, account number noted. Item 7C1, authorize combined dispatch NPD to enter a contract with Lowbitter and our electric company to purchase and install a standby generator and connect it to a gas line currently at West Rocks Middle School for an amount not to exceed $34,500, account number noted. Item 7D1, approve the financial assistance proposal for waypoint development, Phase 2, with DECD for public infrastructure improvements, for a total cost of $3 million. Item 7D2, authorize the mayor, Harry Rilling, to execute the financial assistance proposal and all documents necessary to fully execute the assistance agreement with DECD for public infrastructure improvements for a total cost of $3 million. Item 7E1A, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an agreement with Scholar Painting, LLC, for the building main library exterior wood facade restoration project for total not to exceed $43,320. Funds are available from accounts number noted. 7E1B, authorize the Office of Building Management to issue change orders on the contract for total not to exceed $8,000. Item 7F4, authorize the Director of Public Works to execute change orders with Deering Construction, Inc., for Project PM 2015-1 Pavement Management Program for sum not to exceed $390,000, account numbers are noted. Item 7F5, authorize the mayor to execute a temporary access easement, construction easement at 1 Monroe Street with the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation for State Project Number 301072, in accordance with the map on file with the City of Norwalk Department of Public Works, subject to construction of approximate 10-space parking lot at an adjoining location at no cost to the City of Norwalk. Item 7F6, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all necessary or desired documents in connection with the finalization of the discontinuance and release of the city's interest in the existing 15-foot storm sewer easement located at 13 Day Street, tax lot noted, as depicted on a map on file in the Department of Public Works dated September 12, 2016, including a general release to many, to release any interests that the city may have in the easement. Item 7F7, schedule a public hearing of necessity for the abandonment, discontinuance of a portion of Hanford Place along the northern boundary of the Hanford Place right-of-way at 13 Day Street, tax lot noted, as depicted on map, on a map on file, Department of Public Works dated September 12, 2016. The public hearing of necessity shall be conducted in order to hear all parties interested in commenting on the necessity of the proposed abandonment and to take such action on said application for abandonment that the committee may deem advisable. The public hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, November 1, 2016, 7:00 p.m. in Room 231, Second Floor, in Norwalk City Hall, 125 East Avenue, Norwalk, Connecticut. And finally, item 7G1, approve modification to Section G of the pay plan, which will affect the salary of registrar voters.
Thank you. Are there any changes in the consent calendar? All in favor of the consent calendar as read, please raise their hands. It passes unanimously. Before we move on, I'd like to say, if you are here because of an item that was read on the consent calendar, it means your item is passed, and your presence is no longer needed. Okay, thank you for coming. Before we move on, I'd like to introduce Brian Candela, our new Assistant Corporation Counsel. Miss here?
Sorry, I just want to go over the mic. No, not, I just wanted to quickly introduce Attorney Brian Candela to all of you. He'll be joining us as our new Assistant Corporation Counsel. He's filling a position that's been vacant for a few years, and we spent a lot of time trying to find the right candidate, and I think I could say with confidence that we found the right person, and all your packets and other some information provided about Brian, as well as a copy of his resume, which is very impressive, and we found him to be the right person for the position. We interviewed many candidates over a span of probably a few months, and before that, I'd done a recruitment for a number of months, and so we're very pleased to have Brian with us this evening. So, Brian, I want to say just a, I didn't say you were gonna, I didn't warn you that you were going to come up and say anything, but if you just want to introduce yourself briefly.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. I've been a Norwalk resident for the last nine years, and this is something, this is a great opportunity for me, and I'm very excited to start working with the City of Norwalk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Welcome aboard.
Okay, next item under Council President. Authorize the Corporation Counsel to retain the law firm of Halloran and Sage, LLP, to provide legal counsel to the city regarding issues pertaining to the Connecticut Department of Transportation's plan to reconstruct the Walkbridge and ancillary issues. Because of the nature of this discussion, there's the possibility of going into executive session. Is there a move? Someone would like to make a motion that we go into executive session? Mr. Ignary's move that we go into executive session, are there any discussions on that motion, Mr. Ignary's motion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of going into executive session to only discuss this item, there'll be no action taken, please raise their hands. Okay, I believe, I believe it passed unanimously. I didn't, I didn't see any.
I had a work emergency.
You're okay with the executive session?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so it does pass unanimously. Unfortunately, those of you who are in the audience will have to leave the room, leave the chambers at this point. We'll call you when we're, when we're done the session.
And we enter executive session at 5:30 p.m.
Retain the law firm of Halloran and Sage, LLP, to provide legal counsel to the city regarding issues pertaining to the Connecticut Department of Transportation plans to reconstruct Walkbridge and ancillary, ancillary issues. I move the item. Any further discussion? I certainly hope not. Thank you. Okay, seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. I'm assuming it's okay, it passes unanimously. Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, you have, I think I'm done.
Yes, you are.
Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmel. Next item that we have up for discussion is, let me get this right.
F1.
Oh, yes, okay. 7F1, Mr. Ignary.
Okay, I'd like to actually move 1 and 2, since they're related, and I'd like to make a comment afterwards.
Mr. Ignary moves the items, you want to read them?
Public Works. What happened to the? When are concerned? Approve the discontinuance and the abandonment of a portion of Bates Court, as depicted on a map on file in the Department of Public Works, for a fee of $14,400, subject to a general utility easement. And item number 2 is authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and necessary or desired documents in connection with finalization of discontinuance and release of the city's interest in the discontinued roadway, including a general release, to release any interest the city may have in the property comprising the abandoned portion of Bates Court, as depicted on the map on file in Department of Public Works, for a fee of $14,400. I'd just like to say that this has been looked at by the freeholders. We all have the freeholders' report in our file, and they have found that this is a, they approved the abandonment, and they approved the fee of $14,400. And we had three people doing that. They also contacted the neighbors, Martin Luther King Boulevard, LLC, and some others. They've talked to Metro North Railroad, and Metropolitan Realty Associates, and others. So, there seems to be no objection to abandoning this, and I think we should move forward with it. If we try to, if we don't move it forward, the project won't, won't move forward, so.
Okay, Mr. Ignary moved the item, is there further discussion? Mr. Bonifant.
Thank you. The developer who's asking for the property is also asking for another piece of land that's in, it's working its way through the RFP process in the, in land use, and that's going out for proposals. And what I'm, what I would suggest, or I would like to suggest it, what it's doing is if we give away this property now, you're going to diminish the value or any, or some of the opportunities you may have for the other part that's going out to an RFP process to the public right now. So, I would, I'm going to ask that we table this until the other part comes back to us, so we can move them both together. So, make a motion to table until they come back together.
Mr. Bonifant has made a motion to table this item, or these items 1 and 2. Motion to table is not debatable. Would we have a vote on that issue? All in favor of?
Can we have a roll call?
Roll call vote by, request by Mr. Kimmel. So, clerk, if you would call the roll and ask for a roll call vote on Mr. Bonifant's motion to table.
Mr. Bonifant?
Yes.
Mr. Corcello's gone. Mr. Hempstead?
Yes.
Mr. Kimmel?
No.
Ms. Melendez?
No.
Mr. Sarasis?
No.
Mr. Caides?
No.
Ms. Maggio?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
No.
Ms. O'Toole-Jin Durco?
Yes.
Mr. Ignary?
No.
Mr. Livingston?
No.
Seven to four.
Seven votes no, four votes yes, the motion to table fails. Mr., is there further discussion? Mr. Hempstead.
I just wish my colleague had waited for that motion, because I have some questions I'm trying to figure out. Is the only access to the parcel that's going up from sale, Bates Court, presently, that how you get to?
Which?
From Bates Court to the parcel that's going out to RFP, is that the only access point to that parcel at this stage of the game?
We have the developer here.
Yeah, we do, we can ask him.
But the parcel is the parcel we're selling. No, there is access to that from another area, and I think it's out on to Martin Luther King Drive. I looked into that.
Yeah, that's correct. Excuse me, that is correct. Another piece.
Is that correct?
Yeah. So, they don't need that Bates Court for that parcel to gain access.
I don't think there's a driveway, I think there's driveway cut for Snoo. Snoo has some rights to get some equipment on that parcel, if I'm going back way enough in my memory cells.
We have the developer here, if you wish to ask some questions, that might be best answered by the developer.
Well, okay, that's fine, I just know, it was just an app, because I was going to follow that, thinking that if, is this, can, can, I think this should be conditioned, and the fact is, and my understanding of the project is, developer has, you own the project, or you're? Here's my overall thinking, what I'm trying to get to, is a parcel that, the old Diane Knitwear sitting on, is that parcel owned by the developer at this stage?
No.
So, my thought process was that you're going to approve the abandonment, but it should be conditioned to the fact of all three of those things happened, because then what you could have is a parcel owned by somebody else, Diane Knitwear, if that, if for some reason falls through, since the developer doesn't own it. But they now have abandoned the road, but the other parcel from the city is not going to go through unless all three happen. So, it's kind of like the, what was done with Smith Street, that all things had to go on the road, otherwise it reverts, there should be a reverter clause back at the city if that project doesn't happen. Because right now, what you could happen is you could have the property being owned by the person that presently owns the property, not the proposed developer, all right, next to the city parcel, and then that deal falls through, or whatever happens, you've abandoned the road. For what purpose? Because the purpose was to get everything together, to get it developed, you follow what I'm saying? So, it should be, the three at the end of the day should all be connected, go with the road abandonment, condition upon, the other condition, the sale of property happens to go to the adjoining property, because otherwise, once the abandonment goes through, but then I don't know if the developer, I'll ask him, Mr. Howe, on the abandonment, are you moving forward with the abandonment prior to acquiring the property? But you can't.
Well, it's simultaneous, it's simultaneous. When you abandon it, and there's an appraisal, I think it's $14,000, and we would be acquiring, I don't know what, what point in time we're acquiring it, if the transaction did not happen for any reason, I really don't want the property, but.
This is Mr. Alan Weber.
Yeah, Alan Weber, the chief financial officer with Michael's company. The Diane Knitwear property has, has nothing to do with this at all. We're not in, we're not in contract to buy, we're not negotiating on it, so this, this abandonment is just a small sliver that is, if you looked at it, and I believe she has the map here, it's just a small sliver that looks like it's part of our existing property that, that we own now. This is not the entirety of all of Bates Court that runs along the Diane Knitwear property. So.
The Diane Knitwear parcel is not, that's where, that's where the fusion comes in with, because when you look at the site plan.
Yeah, this is not, this is not.
Nothing to do with Diane Knitwear, doesn't affect Diane.
And this is not the entire length of Bates Court that runs all the way along, all the way along that property to the entrance, to the, oh, to the train station. This is just a little 4,000 and change, little bit sliver, that, if you want, we can, we can show you this map.
We have the DPW here, that has a map on it, and by the way, just to clarify another point that was raised, the topography of the property, on the property, the next phase of the acquisition of the second parcel, Bates. on the property, the next phase of the acquisition of the second parcel, Bates Court goes into the second parcel, and it's a, it's a rock cliff, 39 feet high. Cannot access it that way. You could, of course, if you wanted to, but you can't from a practical standpoint access it. Has no value from an access standpoint whatsoever. There is a potential access from Low Street in Norwalk to the second parcel you're talking. So, by us acquiring this parcel here, is not land-locking and making the other property not usable or marketable. Just to clarify that. And that's, that's factual.
Ms. Maggio.
Go ahead.
Mr. Hempstead, you?
So, abandonment of this portion too does not affect access from any road of the Diane netware factory?
Correct.
Correct. And we can show you on a map if you want.
All right. That's where, I'm not on the committee, so it gets a little confusing when you get the background.
Yeah, it's a little confusing. You're not down here.
Looking at a, a site plan, okay.
By the way, Assistant Corporation Counsel Diane Jacobson is here as well, if there's any questions we have.
Ms. Maggio, I believe you had a question.
So, my question is, and I don't disagree with what Rich is saying if we're putting everything together, because on two different occasions, I think both of you gentlemen have said that if you are not able to acquire the property that is, has been appraised at, what is it, 35.9? I don't know who did the appraisal.
Yes, right.
I'm not sure. Does anybody know who did the appraisal for that property?
I don't know. There was a.
What, I'm sorry?
They did.
Well, I mean, we.
They hired a firm.
Oh, okay. So, so, moving them together, since that now piece of property is going out to, to bid, and, and you may not be.
Has that decision been formally made?
I don't know if that's been made.
Okay, well, it's leaning towards that, and if it is leaning towards that, why wouldn't we just wait and move all of these?
Well, I say, I don't know if that decision.
Let's, let's, be recognized through the chair.
Oh.
Please.
All right.
Now, are you finished? You got a question?
My question was, if, if they're not interested in going through with the entire project without this parcel, and this parcel's going to RFP, maybe, can we just hold on to this so that it doesn't diminish the value of the property if this access is helpful to the property value? I don't know. I don't know if it, if I'm even making any, and I know it's going through my head properly, but I don't know if it's coming out the right way.
I think Mr. Livingston understands, and Mr. Livingston?
If I could just clarify one point, thank you. As, as most of you know, there are two pieces of property here, one of which we're talking about tonight, the other is that corner piece on Low Street, and it came up to Land Use Committee, and, long story short, it's back in the land use, and Mr. Lowe was not here now, I don't believe, has gone back and researched the property and found out that it is buildable, and there is separate access. Mr. Bonifant, I think you mentioned that, or Mr. Hempstead. So, that is going out for RFP. Hopefully, it'll be a short process, and by next month's land use, we should have an answer on that one. That's why I want to get that out there. That's, that's where that is.
Just a question to the Corporation?
Further discussion.
Just a question to the Corporation Counsel. Is there any time certain for these kind of road abandons? Diane, I know is the expert on this. Is there any time certain when this is executed?
That's what we're having a agreement, I'm just asking.
In other words, I believe he's saying if this is authorized tonight, is there a time period in which this has to be executed? So, I think Mr. DeScala mentioned that if the project doesn't go forward, he has no interest in this property.
So, the road will still be abandoned, but we will not have to make our interests out.
Okay, so.
If we go through tonight, the abandonment has been approved, but the city still, we haven't given up our interests to anyone or in any way until and unless we execute or we put claim deed, which is what we will not do.
And by, by the way, technically, people have always referred to it as an abandonment. It's actually a discontinuance. Under the statutes, the Connecticut General Statutes, there's a process by which we can discontinue land. Abandonment is a determination it's been abandoned. This is technically actually a discontinuance. So, to answer the question, which is a good one, because if you think about it from the sense of abandonment, it wouldn't make sense. But if you think about it as a discontinuance, we're not actually discontinuing the road until we issue the deed. So, I understand the question you're asking, which is a good one, because under abandonment, you wouldn't be able to say we're going to, it doesn't happen until we issue a deed. It's, an abandonment is when you make the decision of abandonment. This is really a discontinuance. It's when we issue a deed. So, if we don't, so therefore, if, if the project doesn't go forward and we don't issue the deed and never, fee, the fee title doesn't go to the petitioner for the discontinuance.
Right, but on the reverse end of that, so I'm trying to find out, the regulation's been a long time, so I'm just saying, are you, are the developer under any statute in, within that, that says you've got to execute within 30 days, or 60 days?
No.
So, that could really stand open forever?
No, because effectively what?
I know.
We just discontinued our right to use it as a public roadway, but we still own the property.
Yes, until there's a change of money, exchange of papers, and, and exchange of land, basically.
Tight.
What I'm saying, there's no, I'm just trying to make sure, there's no obligation underneath the abandonment application process that signifies that you must give the city a check by X date, you must execute all contracts by X date. There is no, there is none of that in that particular abandonment process. Is that correct?
There's flexibility to answer the question. Because by the way, it's.
This will work against the developer on the reverse end of this. If we, you know, the other one takes 90 days, there's a 90-day clause, and your back is for one.
Not to get overly technical, not to get overly technical, it's discontinuance, not any, that's really where a lot of, whatever it's worth.
Mr. Weber.
Two things. One, it's practically, it's, it's not actually a, a road right now. It's not, it's not part of the drivable road. If you, you look at it practically, it's, you look at it, it's, it's, it's a rock pile, it's part, it looks like it's part of our property. Two, with regard to the, the timing of it, and to her point, we need this parcel for our zoning approval in order to get our zoning approvals done, which we are, we have a meeting Thursday night with Plan Review Committee next week with Zoning Commission, assuming those all go properly. We're looking to get our zoning approval fairly soon. We don't need the extra piece of land, the, the other quarter acre, to get our zoning approval to fully move the project forward and to actually build it. We have said unless we control that piece of property, we, we need to control that piece of property in order to build it, but to get our zoning approvals, we need this abandonment piece to be approved. So, that's why we would ask that this move forward tonight so we can continue moving our zoning approval ahead. Otherwise, they're just going to say, well, you don't have your abandonment approved, and therefore, we can't move your zoning approvals ahead. And we, and we'd also be happy to say in, if we don't move the project ahead, you know, we'll give it back.
You could have.
You know, we don't need it.
Mr. Sarasis.
Just, why, why is this an integral part of getting approval and moving through zoning?
Because.
Give us a specific.
Because how the building sits on, on the property, part of the building is, is on this property.
Part of the building that is going to be.
Part of the building and, and, and the parking is actually on, is, is on this piece of property.
Thank you.
Ms. Maggio, and then Ms. Giandurco.
You want to go first?
Okay, Ms. O'Toole Giandurco?
She hasn't had a turn yet. I have a question. My question's.
Excuse me, let the record reflect that Mr. Kimmel left the meeting.
I appreciate your comments about the zoning procedure and everything. I just want to hear from Diane. Is that the case, that without this in place, they won't get zoning approval? Is that the normal course of business, how this stuff gets done?
I actually don't know how the zoning works, because I don't get the knowledge of that, so I can't.
Okay, Mr. Kapalo?
Yes, our zoning office generally, in a case like this, will say that it has to be completed. A lot of times, the Lasker Department, in particular, me to, Brian or I to send them an email or something in writing confirming that they can move forward, so yes, that's, that's in fact correct. Because quite frankly, it doesn't benefit the developer to get this done first. They'd probably better off, from their perspective, go to zoning first, but we require they do this, so that's why they're here. They don't have a choice.
Further discussion. Seeing none. All in favor of item 7F1 and 2, please raise your hand.
Raise your hand.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. All opposed. Two opposed, Mr. Bonifant and Ms. Maggio. The motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Mr. Ignary.
You asking a question about this?
I'm sorry?
No, I was gonna, I, I honestly, I was gonna make a recommendation, Mr. Mayor, but you want to wait till you call the item, that's fine. My concern is, my concern was, A, we had this meeting pushed up on a night that we probably should have, you know, postponed this meeting earlier, as has been done in the past. My concern now is respect for those individuals that have, that cannot be here, let alone respect for the holiday, which starts at sundown. I'd like a motion to adjourn.
We do have.
One left item, and I gotta, I gotta.
We do have one more item. Do you want to vote to table that item? I thought that was a discussion.
We had discussed table it, and we thought, we decided against it to move it forward.
Mr. Hempstead does raise a very valid issue that, out of concern for people celebrating or, or recognizing Yam Kippur. Mr. Sarasis?
I'd like to make a motion to table the item to the next meeting.
Okay, Mr. Sarasis has made a motion to table item 7F3. The motion, the, it's not debatable. All in favor of tabling item 7F3, raise your hand.